Good evening, and welcome to Isleta Independent School District Meeting of the Board of Trustees. The meeting of the Board of Trustees is a meeting of the board that is public is allowed to attend. As provided as the Isleta ISD Public Policy BED, we invite members of the public to make comments during the citizens input portion and the start of the meeting. Legally, the board may not listen, but may not enter discussion on matters of citizens input. This meeting of the Board of Trustees is called to order at 6:01. We have a forum with trustee Chris Hernandez, with trustee Shane Haggerty, with trustee Connie Woodruff, with trustee Cruz Ochoa, with trustee Catherine Lucero, and trustee Mike Dwyer, and myself, Charlie Bustillos. Trustee Haggerty, please introduce the Parkland JRROTC.
Thank you, sir. It's become a tradition to honor our nation at each of our board meetings by presenting the colors, reciting the pledges of allegiance, and posting the colors. The colors tonight are being presented by the mighty Junior ROTC Color Guard from the often imitated, never duplicated Parkland High School. The Color Guard Commander is Cadet Lieutenant Colonel Ethan Castillo. The other Color Guard members are Cadet Captain Roman, Roman Delgado, Cadet Command Sergeant Major Everett Falhaber, Cadet Second Lieutenant Maureen Garcia, and the pledge leader is Cadet Major Diva Mendoza. Will you please stand for the presentation of colors, the reciting of the Pledge of Allegiance, the Texas Pledge of Allegiance, and a moment of silence? And please remain standing until the cadets have departed.
Ladies and gentlemen, please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And now please join me in the pledge to the Texas flag. Under the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible. Please join me in a moment of silence. Thank you.
Dr. De La Torre, do we have any recognitions introductions this evening?
Good evening, President Bustillos, members of the board, esteemed guests, we do. I invite our Chief Human Capital Management Officer, Ms. Bobby Russell Garcia, to lead in our recognitions and introductions this evening.
Good evening, Mr. President, members of the board, Superintendent Dr. De La Torre. We have two recognitions for you this evening. At this time, we ask all trustees to please come to the front of the dais. Audience members, please remain seated until all recognitions are completed. Thank you. Our first recognition honors Beller High School student Valeria Martinez. Valeria won gold medals at both Regional and State Skills USA competitions in the spring, then went on to compete against thousands of students from across the state in trade, technical, and leadership fields at the Skills USA National Leadership Conference in Atlanta, where she proudly brought home the bronze in First Aid CPR. This is the second time in three years that an Isleta ISD student has placed among the top three in the nation at Skills USA, which helps empower students to become skilled professionals and ready career leaders. Excuse me. Please help me welcome our Skills USA National Bronze Medalist from Beller High School, Valeria Martinez. She is accompanied by CTE teacher Victor Oshiro and Principal James McIntyre. Let's hear it for the Highlanders. And now, after eight years of heartfelt service to the Isleta Independent School District, tonight marks the final board meeting for Del Valle area trustee Catherine R. Lucero, who is resigning her seat and starting a new journey outside of the El Paso area. Therefore, our final recognition honors trustee Lucero. Trustee Lucero, will you please step forward? Throughout her years of service, trustee Lucero has earned a reputation for advocating on behalf of the underdog. Motivated by a commitment to equity, she has proudly served on the board with one priority in mind, to ensure every student has access to a high-quality education in a welcoming, supportive environment that fosters both academic and personal growth. As board secretary for six years, she played an important role in shaping the collaborative leadership team that helped Isleta ISD become the highest-performing district in the region. We commend trustee Lucero for her compassion, commitment, and distinguished service to this district. We thank her for the countless ways she has uplifted our community, and we wish her every success in this new and exciting chapter in your life. Tonight, we have two special guests who would like to share a few words about trustee Lucero. Please help me welcome to the podium Mr. Henry Rivera and Mrs. Dora O'Haka Rivera.
Thank you. Thank you, Chair Bustillos, Superintendent, and all the YISD Board Trustees. But thank you, Kat, my friend. We are your constituents as well, and we want to thank you for serving with integrity and purpose. You know, it's going to be a challenge to replace you because you've done such a great job. You have led with heart, compassion, and passion. And I do have a story for all of you. In 2019, I got a call from the El Paso Times, and they wanted to know why YISD canceled their election because there was no challengers. And they asked me. I was at that time the chair of the Democratic Party. And was it because of COVID? Was it because there was not enough information out there? And my response was simple and straightforward. YISD has the best trustees. And therefore, the community was happy not to challenge them, but to elect them and leave them as is. And this happened again in 2025. This is a testament of the work that you all are doing, and Catherine, of your work as well, and the impact that you've had in so many lives. Congratulations to you and your superintendent, and we're going to miss you. But you're going to have a good life in Maine. We're going to go visit, and you're going to be the Maine Mexican.
Hi, Catherine, and Isleta Independent School Board. As you know, serving eight years for the city as city representative, I was Catherine's constituent. She was mine. And during that time, I worked with the board, actually with her, really hard. And she would give me some information when I asked, with Ms. Woodruff as well. And so, who could forget Mr. De La Torre? I mean, I just had a good connection with the board here, with the staff, some of the staff here as well. I was able to appoint Ms. Lucero to the Women's Council for the City of El Paso. She gladly accepted. She worked so hard at it that she became the chair. And everybody was excited to have her there. They're sad to see you leave, but it's for the best. And I just want to say thank you for being there for me, as you know, together for District Seven, and as representing the district as well. Thank you so much for everything.
I think my husband is very humble, but I have to say something. You were the call that prompted Henry and the city to have that game that Plano canceled on us because they were afraid of Eastwood during the awful shooting on August 3rd. It was you that called him one afternoon and made it happen. Together, you worked very hard, along with Superintendent De La Torre, to make that happen. And thank you, Catherine, because that wouldn't have been done if you wouldn't have picked up the phone and cared so much for this community. Thank you.
Thank you. And now I'd like to invite our board secretary to the podium to read a letter on behalf of Jaime Abetia. Please help me welcome Board Secretary and Representative for the Beller area, Mrs. Connie Woodruff.
Good evening, friends, union siblings, and community members. I want to take a moment to reflect on the impact and legacy of trustee Catherine Rose Lucero as she steps away from her role on the school board. Catherine and I were together for eight years, and during that time, I had a front row seat to her journey into public service. In fact, I encouraged her to run for the school board because I knew she had both the passion and the experience to serve this community. As a single mother, a community advocate, and a professional with years of experience in government and nonprofits managing budgets and critical resources, Catherine was uniquely prepared for the challenges ahead. Catherine's story is deeply tied to this community. She attended Isleta and Del Valle High School. She often spoke about how her own education helped her not just survive, but thrive as a single mother. She never forgot that foundation, and it's what fueled her drive to give back to the Del Valle learning community. Even though we are no longer together as a couple, we still consider each other family because I helped raise her kids, continue to be in their lives, was a stepmother to my daughter, her grandson calls me Papa, and somehow I inherited one of the family dogs. I can tell you that not even the 2,612 miles of distance between Maine and El Paso will keep her heart from this community. Her commitment to Del Valle has been unwavering. She fought to secure unprecedented resources for the feeder pattern, ensuring students, teachers, and families had what they needed to succeed. But if there's one area of her work that makes me most proud, it's her focus on the social and emotional well-being of students. That commitment proved to be prophetic during the pandemic, when students needed not just academic support, but compassion, understanding, and care. Catherine was ahead of her time in recognizing that students' emotional health is just as important as their academic growth. Trustee Lucero will be deeply missed, not only for her leadership and advocacy she provided for teachers and support staff, but also for the love and dedication she poured into this community. She leaves behind a family here in El Paso, a legacy of service that will continue to inspire us for years to come, and a pair of stylish heels, she's wearing them today, that will be impossible to fill. Catherine, in the true spirit of YISD, you are my outstanding X. May God bless you and keep you on your new journey. I'm confident you will be as successful as your next endeavor, at your next endeavor, as you have always been. Jaime Abetia.
At this time, I'd like to invite three Del Valle High School students to present trustee Lucero with a gift basket on behalf of the community. Please help me welcome Sofia Como, Valeria Hernandez, and Luna Ranhel. Thank you, conquistadores. Before we conclude tonight's recognition, Dr. De La Torre would also like to present a special gift to trustee Lucero to commemorate her eight years of service on the board. Once again, trustee Lucero. From the bottom of our hearts, we thank you for the support and service you've given to our district and Del Valle community. Your spirit and energy will be greatly missed, and our gratitude and appreciation go with you always. One family, one destiny. Let's hear it again for trustee Catherine Lucero. This concludes our recognitions for this evening. Thank you.
Trustee Woodruff, do we have any citizens input this evening?
Yes, Mr. President. We have, first, Rosie Pettis, YWTA.
Thank you.
Good evening, President Bustillos, ISD members of the board, and Superintendent Dr. De La Torre. I would like to first thank Mr. Dwyer for meeting with me and listening to our concerns, and thank you to Mr. Hernandez for your continued support. I want to acknowledge that while we've seen some minimal improvements this year, such as progress in student drop-off procedures at the pre-case, there is still much work to be done. I come to you tonight with a message I am hearing echo across campuses. Teacher morale is struggling. The perception among many of our educators is that because of the recent pay increase, which was long overdue and appreciated, additional work expectations have grown exponentially, much of it unnecessary and redundant, and without the necessary support or balance. Teachers are deeply committed to their students, but they are also experiencing new layers of responsibility that take away from their ability to focus on instruction. Our teachers are telling us they are losing critical planning time. Too often, PLCs, T-test meetings and trainings, and even ARDs are being scheduled during their conference periods with no extra planning time or alternative accommodations. Those conference periods aren't just convenient, they are essential for preparing lessons and meeting the needs of our students. When that time is taken away, it is a direct hit to teacher effectiveness, especially with the extensive lesson plans being required. We are also hearing loud and clear that teachers need clearer and more consistent expectations. When rules look different from campus to campus, or even within a campus, teachers feel singled out while others are not held accountable. It creates frustration and division. And finally, as we learn more about district processes, our educators are asking for stronger due process protections. Teachers need to know they'll be treated fairly and that they can raise concerns without fear of retaliation. Despite these challenges, our teachers remain steadfast in their commitment to our Despite these challenges, our teachers remain steadfast in their commitment to our students. They continue to show up every day, driven by a love of teaching and a belief in the potential of every child. What they are asking for is partnership, collaboration to refine our processes, to protect the time and professional judgment they need to do their jobs well, and to build a culture of transparency and fairness across every campus. I truly believe that by working together, we can address these concerns and create an environment where teachers feel valued, supported, respected, and empowered. And when that happens, our students are the ones who benefit the most. Thank you for your time and for your continued dedication to our schools and community.
Next, we have Jeff Senor.
Good evening, President Bustillos, Dr. De La Torre, Board of Trustees, Catherine Luceto. I just make this short and sweet, but we really, from the bottom of our hearts at YTA, we want to thank you for the work that you've put in on this dais. We want to thank you for the fireworks that you've brought to the dais. It's made it interesting, it's made it enjoyable, and we appreciate all the hard votes that you all have taken, especially you, Catherine, since you're leaving us. We really appreciate everything that you've done for the community. You may be small in stature, but the next person that comes along has really huge shoes to fill. So again, thank you very much. Have a good evening.
Thank you. Dr. De La Torre, do we have any presentations this evening?
Yes, President Bustillos, members of the board, we have two presentations this evening. I'd like to start with a process, an inclusive process, that the district underwent to develop a new strategic action plan last year in the 24-25 school year. With us this evening is Dr. Lizzie Asbury, who is going to kick off the presentation.
Good evening. Good evening, President Bustillos, Dr. De La Torre, members of the board, thank you for having us here tonight. I am here, along with a member of the committee, just to let you know that we are finished with our work. And it's very exciting, isn't it? It's the next chapter of the district, so we're all very excited about that. You will be receiving the plan in its entirety, with the balanced scorecard and all of the great things that go with it, in the very near future. But tonight, we just wanted to come before you and let you know that we are finished with the work, and do a little reminder about some of the work you did, because it's been a long process for everyone, and we just want to honor that work and all the dedication that was put into all of this. So I want to start by sharing an overview with you. I went into my calendar and pulled every date that coincided with this project, and I'm going to just briefly go over theirs, because I want you to understand how long we have been working on this. So it started on February 6th of 2024, when Dr. De La Torre and Dr. Chacon called me and said, "Lizzie, we want you to think about facilitating a project for us, and we want to go into the next phase of the district and start by thinking about all of the things that we need to look at strategically." We had multiple leadership meetings in March, June, and August of 2024. And then finally, if you'll recall, on April 13th of 2024, I spent a morning with all of you, and we had a three-hour work session where we looked at the vision, the mission, the core values, the motto. We talked about strategic planning, we talked about next steps and what the committee would be doing, and we started really going down that road of laying that foundation for the committee. I came back on September 21st of 2024, and we did another board workshop to finalize all of those foundational items that we will review tonight. And that helped the committee really begin its work. And if you were able to participate and come to any of those meetings and attend those, you saw the hard work that went in. It was right here in this room. We had multiple groups, multiple representatives from across your community. We had students, we had teachers, staff members, we had parents, we had business members, we had alumni, we had members of our senior community, and we just had a great smattering across this district of people that came to represent and really build out the next five years of the district. So from October 29th of 2024 to March 24th of 2025, we held five Strategic Action Planning Committee meetings, where we heard voices, and it was a transparent process, and we talked about the next steps, and we talked about really planning out what measurements were correct. Because all of this culminated into students' success. And it's not just about academics, it's about all of the things that we pour into students in this district. This district is the choice in this community, and this plan will reflect that. And I'm very proud of the committee. As you know, I've been here in the district for many years and led many projects, but I will say, this committee was one of the most dedicated that I have worked with. They were very excited about the process, and they loved being here. They came every time, they were in attendance, they were dedicated, and they were really excited about the process. So as of today, September 10th, 2025, the culmination of the strategic action plans went for 20 full months. So no one can say that there wasn't a lot of thought put into this, a lot of planning, and a lot of consistency and dedication. And so as we go through this, I'm just going to remind you of a few things. If you'll recall, when we had our two board workshops, we went and looked at the mission, the vision, and the motto of the district, and revised and updated those, and you all blessed this, and we gave this to the committee before they started their work, because we felt it was very foundational for them to know this and to see it, and to really base everything they did off of these three items. Then we went forward, and we talked about what an ASLEDA student looks like, and we wanted to make sure that these core beliefs were seen throughout the district. Everywhere you go, every campus, that you could see these things happening. And if you will recall, this was a long part that we did when we worked on this together those two times. It took us some consternation to get through this. There was a lot of opinions, but we wanted to make sure that we had the right core values there for your students. And then, these were the priority focus areas that the committee worked on. We had finance and facilities, safety and security, academics, which included all kinds of academics, from pre-K to special education and all in between, and then also our human capital management. So when you receive the plan, you will see these are the focus areas in the plan where everything falls underneath these areas. And then finally, the committee put together the graduate profile, and this was a very proud moment for them. We went through some exercises with them on consensus build and talking about attributes, and what they wanted a graduate to be like when they left ASLEDA ISD, and these were the six areas that we felt and the committee felt was most important. I love this statement on this graduate profile, and I want to read it aloud because I think it's very prolific. "With these qualities, ASLEDA ISD graduates are prepared to succeed in higher education, careers, and civic life. They are lifelong learners, responsible citizens, and leaders who positively impact their communities and the world." And that's what the committee worked on. All the times they were together, they kept that in mind, and they put together this lovely graduate profile that I know will be displayed in many places throughout the district as we strive for all of these things. And before I end my piece tonight, I just want to say thank you for allowing me to work with this committee, and once you start getting the plan in front of you and seeing it unfold, you will see all the hard work that they put into it. It was a lot of nights of dedication and putting time into this plan, and every night they talked about students. It was definitely the focus of all of those meetings. But I want you to hear it from somebody who was on the committee, and we have an actual committee representative here with us tonight, and he would like to share his opinions and his perception of what happened. Actually, we have two. Sorry, we have another one. Oh, great. Debbie's here. And so they are going to share with you some of the process and just some heartfelt words on their experience in the committee.
Good evening. My name is Mario Ramirez, and I was chosen to be part of the committee for the strategic action planning. And I'm here to give you a little bit of my experience. It was amazing to see the amount of work that was put into all of this planning, the number of people that were involved, the diverse group. As Dr. Lizzie mentioned, there were parents, there were community members, there was alumni, there was administrators, there was staff, there was pretty much anybody that wanted to come out here and be here. They found somebody to come out here and represent that section of the community, and that's amazing that you have that type of diversity planning for our kids, for their future. And that's really the biggest take, because the amount of information that was provided, the different types of programs and opportunities for our kids within the district is amazing. And so to put this much time and effort into the planning for the future of our kids, that's what's important. And it was my honor to be on this committee. I'm hoping that in the future, I'm selected to be in other types of committees where I can have my input and have this type of information provided to me, so that I can share that information with other members, other community that were not able to be here, because that's the way to get kids and families to start coming into our community and growing our district. So again, it was my honor to be here, and I'm looking forward to see what was put into play here take fold in the next several years. So thank you.
Good evening, President Bustillos, Superintendent De La Torre, and board members. My name is Debbie Torres. I live in Area 6, which is trustee Hernandez's area, in the ASLEDA learning community. I was also honored to be chosen to serve on the committee, and there's just a few thoughts that I wanted to share with the board, just for future reference, for future committee work. First of all, my experience not being an educator or teacher administrator was that there was what I would call a lot of education ease. You've heard of Portuguese, you've heard of Lebanese, those two languages I do not know, and education ease was a little lacking for me. Some of the technical terms, some of the topics were user-friendly, but when you get into things like STARS and other areas, it was just really difficult for me to follow because I didn't have a formal education as an educator. And I think I was probably the only one at my table, because I was the only community member there. The other issue that I wish could have happened would have been to be able to have someone facilitate the committee, with all due respect to Dr. Lizzie Johnson, she's great, but to be able to hire someone from local, specifically one of our very gifted administrators from the YISD district, who would be able to facilitate this. This would bring in the local aspect, and it would also save the district money, which I know is a huge concern right now. The last thing that I wanted to bring up was the fact that, I don't know whether it was because of time, but the parent-community component that was originally listed in the items to be covered was not covered, at least not at my table. And if it wasn't covered at my table, I'm sure it wasn't covered at any other one. And that personally, to me, being a community member and having my child in the district many moons ago, was sad for me that we were not able to capture that component as part of the process. So that's all I have to say. I wish you all well. I hope that everything that the committee has worked on will prove to be fruitful for the students in the district. Thank you.
Dr. De La Torre, do any questions or comments?
I just want to say thank you so much, because that undertaking was something that was district-wide. We had people from all over the area, and just to bring that type of a group together is not always easy. We were on a time constraint and all of those things, and I just want to say thank you very much to you, and also to all the people who served on the committee. I think you did a good job. Thank you.
Trustee Hernandez.
Thank you, Mr. President. Dr. Asbury, thank you so much for all the work you did. You did exactly what you were hired to do, and you did a fantastic job. So my comments are more for my colleagues in the district. Moving forward, just something to keep in mind, because of the feedback that I got from this process, I know Ms. Torres was not alone in her feelings. It was reported back to me by other committee members that I had appointed asked to participate. It was very much so just administration and staff, employees that work here at YISD, especially as each meeting progressed. The non-employee community members, I was told, felt like it was a waste of -- it wasn't what they thought that it was going to be. They were information sessions, where they did learn a great deal, and they were very thankful for that. As the gentleman said, they were able to bring that information back to their fellow community members, and that was very valuable. But the part of them being to give input was not there. They didn't feel like they were really working towards anything. It felt like they were being told of what's going to happen. This is what we're going to do, and any ideas you have, thank you for sharing, but we can't do that, or we're not going to do that. It also felt, one comment that was made to me, that perhaps, you know, if it is just going to be an information session, there might be another way to do it instead of over month after month after month, possibly in one day, possibly with different other ways of communication. That was the disappointing part for some of the committee members and why some of the community members did not continue to show. But again, obviously, you did a fantastic job. You brought great information for us. I just know we're going to do this again in five years, and the feedback that I got, I would like us all to consider. But thank you.
Trustee Ocho.
I had the privilege of being here for almost all of the meetings and the sessions, except one. And what I saw, from my perspective, being here, present, was I moved around and looked at the tables and saw the participation that was happening. It wasn't -- it was more of a -- everybody had a say-so as to what was happening during those sessions. Everybody had a goal, especially on what their table was. Everybody had a goal, especially on what their table was, was assigned to. I know some of the members wanted to go to other areas, but they had to stay within their lanes so they could focus on what was being discussed. And what I saw was, way after you called them, called them to say it's time to go, I think most of those people were still staying, working after the hours. And I thought that was most impressive, that they decided to stay afterwards and continue working to produce what we're going to see today. This plan is, is, is very valuable to the district. It'll give us the foresight to see and adjust and adapt to what's going to happen in the next five years. These last five years that, when we had the strategic action plan for the last, when we started back in 2020, I mean, things happened that were out of our hands, that we just had to adjust, like COVID. And that was a, something we never forecasted in our, in our strategic plan. But we were able to overcome that because we had the stability and the resources to, to overcome those challenges. This is just a plan. It doesn't have to be followed word for word, but it gives us the guidance that we need to prepare our students, which I still have grandkids, and most of the, some of you have children that are still attending, that is very valuable to us and to understand what kind of quality education are we going to give our kids next year, two years from now, three years from now, five years from now. Our teachers have been great in adapting to what the environment has been. And I just think that this plan might not be perfect, but it's a good plan, and it's something we can follow. And be assured that we will still be growing as we go from year to year to have our, our children be successful in whatever it's going to be here in five years from now, you know? So, but again, thank you for the hard work that you did. I was, like I said, I was present for all, all the sessions except one, but every time I was very impressed with, with the energy and the focus that everybody brought to the, to their own table there. So, thank you again.
Trustee, who's there?
I think that feedback from participants and community members is extremely important, especially through the process. And I think that's also something that makes us a really great district is that we take the, the feedback that, that, that was experienced, and we make things better. And that's really what has, through, through a community that we are. And I think the community of YISD is an important community with our educators and others that participated strongly in this plan because for the next five years, we need that buy-in. So, it's very important for our educators to really, really understand this plan and be part of it from the outset. So, I, I, I'm happy to hear that, you know, within the community, outside of the education community, we can take those recommendations and implement them as we move forward. But I'm also really, I'm, I'm honored to hear that this plan is very strong with, that was done very strongly with people in education because they will be implementing this plan. So, thank you, and thank you for, for the feedback tonight.
Anybody else? I just want to say thank you also for your work. My constituent, Ms. Castro, I, I coach her daughter, and every time she would come pick up her daughter after practice, she would just tell me about the process that you guys would do, and she truly enjoyed it. And I told her, it's like, this is, this is definitely, you guys are studying us in the right direction. And like, Trustee Ochoa said, it might not be perfect, but it's definitely giving us something to work with to lead us forward. So, I also want to say thank you. Thank you for your hard work. And for, for everybody that participated in it, thank you for your time. I know, you know, you take time from your family, you take time from other things that you do. Thank you for putting in that time. So, thank you.
President Bustillos, members of the board, our next presentation is surrounding our academic presence in Region 19, and no one better to present the outcomes that we recently experienced than our chief academic officer, Dr. Brenda Chacon Robles.
Good evening, President Bustillos, members of the board, Dr. De La Torre. I have the honor of presenting the next information. It is a testament of the work of a community, teachers, parents, students, board, principals, every single person, CNS, everybody counts when it comes to student performance, and so I'm, I'm glad to be here tonight. So, I'd like to start off with our 24-25 academic outcomes. It's no news that our rating was an 89, right? Which is three points higher back than 2024. Ninety-six percent of your schools are rated A or B. Forty-three percent of our schools are rated A, and I'm happy to report that we have no D or F-rated schools in our district. And the next list is a list of A-rated schools, some for the first time, some repeating either their third year, fourth year, or back-to-back. But again, a testament of the strong systems of instruction and focus in our district. District highlights, there's lots to be proud of, beginning with you are the highest-rated district in Region 19 in addition to compared to the TUC districts. You're also ranked top, top 14% districts in the state, including charter schools. You have the highest CCMR rates among the large districts in Region 19. You have the second highest CCMR rate in Districts TUC. One in every four graduates earned three or more credits for college courses while attending our schools and high school. Half of the class of 2024 graduated having an industry-based certification. And something we're proud of, nearly 230 students from the class of 2024 earned an associate's degree before graduating high school. So, again, a testament of the many, many hard works of lots of principals, teachers, students, parents, and all of you. Lots to be proud of in our district. Our distinctions, designations, this is also distinctions that TEA provides based on your comparative group. Thirty-nine out of 44 schools were awarded at least one distinction designation. Nine schools were awarded every distinction designation for which they were eligible, and they're listed below, from Eastwood Heights, Glencov, Ahanks, being the only high school in the region who earned all distinctions, Pressa, Ramona, Sage, Lantira, Vista Hills, and Isleta Elementary. In addition, the district was awarded the post-secondary distinction designation. We were awarded this in 2024, and, and also for '25, and also in '23. So, this is our second year getting this distinction. So, before we, we go into the website, we wanted to kind of do something a little different and actually go live. So, I'm going to click on it. And this is the website. It was important for us to present this because this is information that we also just recently shared with parents. When people want to know, how do I know what our district or schools are rated? The state has provided a website called TexasSchools.gov, and you can simply go in there and put our district, for example, and all the information about the district comes up. So, I'm driving it as we speak, but you can see there's our school rating, along with the enrollment, your PMS numbers, your attendance rate, everything about, and the distinctions that we just earned. You get to see the performance of the district, right? And here it breaks down the percentage of the schools for each domain, right? Remember, there's three domains, and it rates every single, provides the community an in-depth account of the accountability system and how the school is rated. And so you can see there's CCMR, the graduation rate, everything about Isleta ISD is on this. It also provides the school progress, which is growth. And again, something we're very, very proud of is our academic growth. It's important for our students to perform, but it's also very important then when parents drop them off to us that they make the year's growth that they intended. That if they entered third grade, right? They leave much better prepared for fourth grade than when they first started with us. So, here it lists our academic growth, and you can see that the district continues to make strides when it comes to that in growth. We went up three points in academic growth. And you can also see the school ratings by enrollment, right? So, when you dig into the data, it just continues going in there, along with closing the gaps. So, here's your closing the gaps data. And again, it breaks down the domain. But we wanted to share this with you so you can see how the district, and every parent has the opportunity to click on an elementary school. You can see all your data for all the schools. Lots of great things in this website here. I lost my mouse, I don't know where it went. Sorry. There it is. You can also get to compare, so when you are bored over the weekend, you can sit here and click on TexasSchools.gov. I know, Mr. Hernandez. And you can also compare districts. So, I'm just going to compare us to our neighbors, right? And so you can see, okay, why, why is the district higher rated than other districts? And so I'm going to just type in, oops. So, again, you can compare schools, you can compare districts, and the visuals that it provides gives you a good idea of why is the district performing better than others compared to themselves, right? So, here's Socorro, here's El Paso. You can compare our letter grades per domain. So, it gives you a quick view of why the district is rated higher than our neighbors compared to them. So, you can, for example, in our case, our biggest growth is growth, academic growth. And it's huge for us, that commitment that we make to our parents, that our commitment is to make sure that your child makes a year's growth every year. And that is our commitment, and that's what we work hard and to do because if that was our kids, and many of you have our kids in our schools, and that's what we would like them, is to leave better and more prepared than when they first entered school. They leave May a better student. And so that's our intent, and that's the work that we do. But I felt that this time I was, I was going to present it a little different by actually going into the website, a website that our community and our parents and all of us should be familiar because it is about transparency, and we're very proud of the work, what we do. And we want to make sure that everybody has the tools they need to be able to see, why is the Isleta District the number-one district in this region? And here's why. Any questions? Before I go to my last slide.
Can I just say that this was an amazing presentation so far?
I appreciate that. I thought, wasn't sure of how the website was going to go, but so far it's going okay. You want to say what? You want to say last one? Yes, I'm going to, back to that. All right, I'm going to go back to the presentation. So, PR, if you will take me back, please. Okay, so if there is no further questions on student outcomes, again, lots to be proud of, so congratulations. And the last slide is information. As you know, House Bill 8 was recently passed in the special session of the 89th Legislative Session. The bill changes STAR for the year 27-28. So, we will continue with STAR as we know it this year, and one more year. The bill changes STAR to call now SST, or Student Success Tools. So, it will no longer be STAR or EOC. It will be SST. It continues to test the same subjects, the language, everything that 38 has. However, the, one of the biggest differences is that now there will be a beginning-of-year, a middle-of-year, and an end-of-year exam. So, it'll be comprised of three tests, and the three tests are intended to be shorter, but capture the beginning-of-year, the middle-of-year, and the end-of-year growth for students. For high school, it does remove English II from the list of assessments that are required. And it also requires a performance to continue to be at the level of STAR, and the new tests need to be available in 2027-28. One of the things that's not listed here that it's important is that the results for the exam have to be ready, ready within two days after the students take the exam. So, those are the things that are coming through with House Bill 8, with the passing of House Bill 8. And I wanted to provide you that update. But it won't affect accountability or the A-through-F system. It doesn't remove that. It simply just changes the exam.
I have a quick question.
Any questions?
Dr. Chacon, so just to make sure I understand this correctly, well, now we have three tests that are mandated, or are they not mandated, as the STAR was?
Three tests that are mandated. So, it's a beginning-of-year, a middle-of-year, and an end-of-year. So, what it does, it takes the STAR at the end of the year, and it takes it into three time periods, beginning, middle, and end-of-year. I would like to say that in our district, we do take what we call an interim exams. You've heard that before. Kind of a similar concept, so it's not a huge difference for us, but we do take a beginning, which is right on in the fall, and we take one right around February. Most of you know them as, they used to be our mock exams when the schools did mock testing or practice testing. It's similar to that concept. But in our district, we've always used the interim test to help us and guide us through progress monitoring to ensure that we are making sure that, to we can have time to fill in the gaps. And so they happen at the time, right, when either we start tutoring, intercession, different things like that, or all year. Our intervention is ongoing. So, it's all year that we intervene for kids to make sure that they have the necessary tools they need to be able to be successful on these exams.
And these beginning, middle, and end-of-year, these tests, how long are they going to be? I'm sure they're not going to be as long as the one we had at the end of the year, as we have now.
Yeah, that is actually written in the law, so right now... Um, I believe, sorry. Right now, they, that's written in there. They're, one, the beginning and middle of the year cannot exceed 75 minutes. So, that's currently there. At the end of the year, the last one in May, is 105 minutes. And so that's currently written in there. Again, will they be that exact time? I don't know, but the intent was to make them shorter, more informative assessment, ongoing.
All the grades levels that are currently taking the test, it will still be the same for them?
Everything's the same, except for English II. So, your sophomores will no longer be required to take English II.
Now, they say they're going to require a new test to be available in 27-28. What is that?
That's the new format. So, you'll have the new beginning-of-year, middle-of-year, and those are the new exams. So, STAR is still the same, but the new format, the...
So, this will be implemented in 27-28?
That's correct.
Oh, okay.
So, August, the first test window that we have is August, the beginning of August to September, if I'm not mistaken. That's when we'll start the first round of BOY testing.
Okay. One more question. Will any, who will have input into the formation of this new test? Or is it always like done, in a back room, in a black room?
Well, based on the law, and I believe there's a committee that the commissioner has to establish of teachers, compromised, yes.
Teachers, that's important because sometimes you have people that are that well-suited to make these determinations. And I think that we need some teachers, and some people that are involved with education to make these recommendations as to how this test is going to be conducted.
Yes, that's what the law requires a commissioner to do, is to start setting up a task force of teachers, I believe, to be able to provide input on the exams.
And one last question. How do you foresee AI impacting this test?
So, it'll continue to be scored, specifically the writing pieces, which is what we've shared here. They'll continue using artificial intelligence to score the writing pieces. I don't know how it'll impact the new test now that they're shorter and how it'll change things, but I'm assuming that the commissioner will continue to use those methods of grading.
One last, before that. Okay, so you brought up that, that AI will be scoring these tests. How are we going to adapt to this type of scoring? Do we have AI presently that we will use to kind of simulate what the response will be for some of our writings?
We currently do. So, we use, it's different tools. One tool in particular, Magic Schools, that we use, and they're already at Inc. at the high school. And we use those, their language models of AI, and we use them to already help assist our teachers when they score either an extended constructed response or a... constructed response or a short constricted response, the writing pieces that we do. So that is available to our teachers now.
I thought it was my last, but this is, I hope this is. So based on that, the data that we have now from these scoring from the STAR, how can we compare that to what we have learned using our own tools? Are they similar or are they the ballpark or are they way off?
It's getting better. It's getting better. Obviously, they use their own tool and it's programmed to measure exactly what they're looking for. Our tools that we have have helped and are getting better, but we continue working on rating all the time.
Yeah, I think that's what I think is that we need to go down that path and make our tools kind of, kind of reflect what they're doing. So, so most of our teachers don't spend a lot of time that, that is unnecessary because, you know, unfortunately, we don't have people scoring these things. It's a computer. And I just don't know where that's going to lead us to, but we got to work with what we have and that's, you know, we'll try to do our best. I just want to make sure that we are aligning ourselves in the next five years to address this.
Yes, we do. Every time there's an assessment, whether it's a local assessment or a state assessment, we do what we do best and we analyze the data, make sure that we, we learn from it, what's working, what's not, and make those adjustments to make sure our students are successful and give the teachers the tools they need to be able to address those gaps.
Okay, thank you. Trustee Hernandez?
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Dr. Chacon, for this presentation. I guess I should have made my comments about the accountability because I do want to. But first, I think there's a bit of excitement when we first heard that the STAR test was going away, but that's not really what happened. I'm interpreting this as nothing more than a rebranding and our teachers are still in the same situation of having to teach to the test. Thank you, Trustee Ochoa, for your comments. It's a reminder that now we're having our students having to write to appease AI. And I love AI. I use it every day. I'm a huge advocate of its use, but I know I also disagree with a lot of its interpretations. I think, last year, we discussed biases towards emerging bilingual students. I have a huge problem with that. So I'll continue to advocate to our state legislators on that. I have a question. How does this affect SPED testing?
So all SPED students continue to take, there's two types of SPED testing right now. Either your SPED student does take regular STAR, so they would indeed take the new SST, right? Or there's an ALT version. So depending on your disability and depending on the severity is the ARD makes a determination of which exam you take. So we have many, many SPED students taking regular STAR. They would take regular SST. And then they also have an ALT version, right? Which is STAR Alternate. I'm not sure what the ALT version will be called in the SST ALT. I'm not sure, but they do take those things. Now, your special ed student does have access to accommodation. So there's a lot of accommodations within the exam that your special ed student, as determined by ARD, have the ability for those exams.
Are you seeing this as a major change or pretty much the same?
Like you said, it's a, it's a rebrand. It's a, it's not a major change. I know there was the initial understanding that STAR was eliminated. STAR is not eliminated. The accountability is not eliminated. It is simply changing the name and the format of the test. The good news is, is that our teachers, our students are used to kind of a three-test model, just because that's what we do internally as far as our interim exams. And that's, I think, one of the reasons that we're successful is we're constantly looking at how else can we help our students? What else do they need to know? What do they not know? What do they not master? And we're making sure that, I don't, I would not want to say testing, teaching to the test. I want to make sure that we're mastering the content to the extent possible.
Thank you. If I could just make comments on the accountability rating? Well, first, is it true that we're the highest rated district in the county? I heard that rumor.
I know, for the fifth year in a row.
For the fifth year in a row. Obviously, it's a huge congratulations to everybody at the district. You know, congratulations to our parents. We all know the, the challenges in implementing the discipline required to see our, our children successful at the district. It's a huge victory for our teachers. My, my fifth grade daughter, I've never heard her so excited about a teacher. She's so excited about her math teacher. I couldn't, I could never replicate that type of excitement that some of our teachers are able to do. And she was a student who went from approaches and is now in masters. I'm very proud. And I also want to give a congratulations to the students themselves. I know Charlie, we always speak about, you know, we have a double chip on our shoulder. We're not only south of I-10, but we're south of Alameda. And I make no apologies for saying that the students in our learning community face more challenges than some of the other students. A lot of them are forced into situations where they have to contribute financially to their households. And on top of that, they stick to their educational responsibilities, showing up, putting in the work, and getting many of our schools to A ratings. And I want to thank them because it's up to them. They are the ones that have to do it. They have to do the work. So to every student in our district, thank you for showing up. Thank you for the work and congratulations. And thank you for the presentation.
Thank you. And I, one of the things that I think I admire about our district and especially Dr. De La Torre's leadership is that what's good for one is good for all. And if there's one thing I can say is that doesn't matter the zip code of our kids, as he says, they all deserve that quality education. And I guarantee you that that is our mission, to make sure that every single one of our kids gets what they deserve. And our teachers are a huge success of our, part of our success, along with our parents and student. It takes every single person, but it first takes the vision that you have to ensure that what's good for one is good for all and that we all have to believe that all students can learn, no matter what.
I have a question. First for HBA, I know we said that we talked to, we talked about the three tests. I know we already do that, obviously. Now, do we know if we're going to be tested, that when we test on those three tests, are they going to count them accumulatively or individually? How's that going to work? Do you know?
So that is the difference. Right now that we take three tests, but interim is for our own kind of learning and we learn the TEES and the test, but now they will count towards accountability. So it's an accumulative score. Exactly how the growth and everything will be measured, I don't know the methodology yet, but they would do count now for accountability.
And that's still a measurement towards the end? And I guess at the end, that's the one that's for all the marbles?
One of the biggest things is to measure the growth as you progress from beginning of year to middle of year to end of year. So that was a big intent of, of House Bill 8 is to have a more, you know, one of the comments was, one test doesn't define the student or that, you know, it could be a bad day. There could be many things that happen on the one day we test. So that's why the legislation, I don't know, this is all just me assuming, they introduced a beginning, middle, and end to try to capture three different points for the students and kind of average those out. But as soon as we get the methodology and more information and the blueprints and what are we tested, we will definitely keep you updated.
Now to our academic outcomes. You know, I think this, this board, in the past, we've always tried to crack the crow for middle school. I thought we did really good on our middle schools. And just tribute to Dr. De La Torre, yourself, and your team for really bringing out the best in our kids. And a lot of that to our teachers, you know? I know they work. I have one at home that she's working all the time and puts a lot of work into our kids. So I just, at this point, I want to say thank you for all your hard work. The other thing too is, did we not ask for extra credit for Mr. Marath an 89, guys? Come on.
So I will let Dr. De La Torre comment on that one.
At that point, it'd have been an A district. I think we got to work on that, guys.
Yes, sir. I reached out and it was, I believe, the Tuesday or Wednesday that we found out that we had earned an 89. And Mike and I have a very good relationship. And the reason we have a good relationship is because this district has never worried about lawsuits and pushing back and trying to avoid the STAR. What we've always said is, as long it's, as long as it's the same for all school districts, we focus more on the kids and not worry about spending district resources on litigation. I do want to say a couple of things. One, she is uncomfortable with recognition, but Dr. Brenda Chacon is probably the best chief academic officer in the state and she's got the best team. It is so personal and so visceral to her to give her principals, her teachers, the students, our families, 110%, not just when it gets time to take the test, but every day leading up to the test. And I think that that's important to note. I think it's also important to acknowledge and recognize the role that teachers play in our school district. And I want to, I'm not going to excuse anyone, but I certainly want to point out the work that the teachers that work with our students who have special needs and the teachers that work with our emerging bilingual students outperform everyone in the region significantly. And they, those children have significant challenges. So you have 80% of our students are socioeconomically disadvantaged. That's very different than some of the students that you just referred to who live south of Alameda, who live in abject poverty. Because to be socio, socioeconomically disadvantaged means a family of four making $45,000 a year. That's the standard. We have families that make $11,000 a year, $14,000 a year. That goes far beyond being socioeconomically disadvantaged. One out of every three students in this district come to us and their primary language is Spanish. One out of every five students has special needs. 30% of those students have all three. They're poor, they speak Spanish, and they're special ed. And to see those students perform as well as they do is really a testament to this school district, but to those teachers and their support staff and the people in the cafeteria and transportation. Everybody has a role, has a responsibility. Leadership unparalleled. The principals, the instructional leadership teams that we hire in this district drive it. Teaching, and, and don't take this wrong, teaching can be the highest form of volunteerism. When I used to teach, if you never had a principal or an instructional coach or an assistant principal, visit your class and give you feedback on what was happening in the class, you could simply close your door, lock the door, and then you get to decide how much of an effort you're going to make that day on behalf of those kids. So the supervision, support, and evaluation of instruction is a big, big element in the way we approach what happens in the four corners of the classroom. And so I would caution anyone to suggest that morale is low in this district. It isn't low. I've been going out and I've been doing presentations on our health benefit plan and the changes. You know where morale is at? Morale is at an all-time high. They're proud, they're A-rated, they're B-rated, two schools are C-rated. So when you look at a handful of teachers that feel like they're under a great deal of pressure, it's exactly that. It's a handful of teachers, I've got the number right here, it is less than .02% of our teachers right now have suggested that they're under a great deal of pressure and that they're not being treated fairly. Out of 2,600 teachers, we're talking about a small group of teachers. And so I would just ask that we not use this hyperbole to create the idea that everybody's unhappy out there because right now they're the proudest group of professionals in the city. Thank you.
Well, I'm definitely proud and I really, it takes, like Dr. De La Torre says, I think it does take a team from our parents to our teachers. It just takes a community and this little community wins today because we all did our jobs. So again, thank you for all your hard work. Thank you, Dr. De La Torre.
You're welcome.
This board, thank you. And I got one more, one member that wants to talk.
Hey, wanted to echo what Dr. De La Torre expressed about Dr. Chacon. It's, it's really a testament to your work because you, you show up, you really do show up for the students, you show up for the teachers. You, you are no-nonsense, hardworking and dedicated, but you expect the same thing from those that are working at this district. And you offer the tools and put tools in place so that they can be successful. And I do want to thank the teachers and every single person that contributes to our student success, parents, cafeteria, security, maintenance. Everybody plays a role, as our board president said, in this community to our student success. We can, we keep moving forward and we keep setting the bar high. And I remember in some of the discussions throughout my career here at, at the board that I got uncomfortable sometimes hearing how we were rating, we were wanting to strive for so high, but I learned that you set the expectation high and, and students can achieve wonders. And that's the passion that I see in our teachers and in our, in our district. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Yes. Dr. Chacon, I just want to thank you for your open door policy. I appreciate it. You know, we, you know, Mr. Dwyer, I'll study the data and if I see something that I don't understand, you're readily available and I really appreciate that. I'm very proud of all the work that you do and the rest of the associate superintendents and all of the administrators here at Central Office. I know your number one priority, as it should be, is to make sure that every one of our students in the entire district has what he or she needs to be successful. And it's an honor to be on this board, working with such wonderful people. Thank you.
Thank you very much. But again, as I'd like to thank my team, they're here, they can stand because they do a lot of the hard work. Some ladies, they stand, they want to be recognized, but they are one of the reasons for our success here. So I, I thank you. But yes, it is, again, you have to believe that all students can learn and that's what we believe and that's what our mission is and we're going to continue doing what's good for kids because that's, at the end, that's why we exist. That's our purpose. That's our, we are about academics and ensuring that kids have the tools to be college and career-ready once they leave us. So we're very, very proud and congratulations to the entire district. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Now for our public hearing. Per TEC 44.004, the board policy CE legal, the Board of Trustees must hold a public hearing to discuss and set the district tax rate on an annual basis. A notice for public hearing to discuss the 2025-2026 tax rate was previously published in the El Paso Times. The Board of Trustees appreciates your, your attendance and welcomes your input during the public hearing. Please observe the following rules. Individuals wishing to speak are limited to three minutes. After the presentation, we will take public comments on the district tax rate. Dr. De La Torre, do we have a presentation on the district tax rate?
Yes, sir. President Ochoa, members of the board, you know her well. Please, I turn it over to Ms. Camber.
Good evening, President Bustillos, Dr. De La Torre and members of the board. This evening, we have our annual tax rate presentation to accompany the public hearing. As you know, this is very complex information, which your constituents often ask you about. So I'm going to take the information and go through it slowly and methodically to hopefully give you the... give you the information you need to answer questions. On this first slide, we're going to talk about some historical information, starting with the state homestead exemption. And I'm on this row here. You can see from 2020 through 2025, the homestead exemption granted by the state has increased from 25,000 to 140,000. The $140,000 statewide homestead exemption is subject to voter approval in November, but as you can imagine, voters are always going to support an increased homestead exemption. The next exemption, though, is unique to Isleta ISD. It is the only local optional homestead exemption granted in the county. It represents 20% of the homestead value is reduced off the top, and I'll show you in a few moments how that particular calculation works. Then I want to direct your attention just to 2025 and talk about the total accounts in the Isleta Independent School District. So when we say Isleta ISD has 68,587 accounts, we're talking about, it could be a raw land parcel, it could be a commercial entity, it could be a homestead, it could be residential rental property. But all total, there are 68,587 accounts in the Isleta ISD boundaries. Of that 68,000, 38,985 have a homestead exemption. And if they are eligible for the homestead exemption, they're automatically granted the 20% local optional homestead exemption. That means that 57% of our homeowners have, or our accounts have, a homestead exemption. Then moving to the next section of the chart, of the accounts that receive the homestead exemption, again, that 38,985 who get the homestead exemption, 21,000 accounts pay taxes. 17,324 accounts, or 44.44% of the homesteads in Isleta ISD, pay zero tax to this school district. The bulk of our funding comes from the state. All right. And this is where it typically gets confusing, so I'm going to move slowly here. You can see that right now, I'm going to talk about EPISD, Socorro, and Isleta, and we're going to set a constant home value of 205,000. So you have an apples-to-apples comparison of what a tax bill looks like. Because it's absolutely true, Isleta's tax rate is higher than the other districts. It's higher than the cities, it's higher than the counties. But by the time we get to the tax bill, it's lower than every single one of them. So let's start with a home value of 205,000. Immediately for YISD, we deduct 20%, or 41,000. That leaves an adjusted value in YISD of 164,000, again, still compared to 205 for each of the other districts. Then everyone that's in a school district gets a $140,000 homestead exemption. That's the statewide exemption. That brings our taxable value on a home to $24,000 compared to 65,000 in our peer districts. And finally, as I mentioned, our tax rate is higher. We are proposing $1.20 per $100 evaluation this year, compared to Socorro's $1.05 and EPISD's $1.08. That means a homeowner in Isleta ISD is going to get a bill for $288 if their home is valued at 205,000. That is $400 less than a Socorro homeowner who's going to pay 688, and $414 less than an EPISD homeowner who's going to pay 702. That's if every home is valued at 205,000. Obviously, EPISD homes are the most expensive at 258,421. That's the average value of a home in EPISD. The average value of a home in Socorro is 242,000 compared to the average value in Isleta of 205,000. I'm going to now take these values, and I'm going to build the chart a little bit differently, and it's going to grow some. So now, we're going to take those average values I just spoke about, and we're going to add the city of El Paso to the calculation. So with a home value now, using the median values, you can see we're no longer doing apples-to-apples, we're taking the average home value in each of those taxing entities. Immediately, we take our unique local homestead option, and we deduct $41,485. That brings our taxable, or I'm sorry, our adjusted value to 164,000, compared to 244 in the city, 242 in Socorro, and 258 in EPISD. Now, school districts again get to deduct the 140,000 state homestead exemption. But El Paso, in the city, only offers a $5,000 homestead exemption. If you deduct those exemptions, now you can see Isleta's taxable value on its average home is 24,739. The city of El Paso taxes the home on 239,000 of value, compared to 102 in Socorro and 118 in EPISD. Again, applying each of their rates, you can see that now the average homeowner in Isleta is going to get a bill for $297 from us, compared to $1,820 from the city of El Paso, $1,523 more than Isleta taxes the average home value. The Socorro Independent School District is $792 more than us at 1,089 for their average homeowner, while EPISD is $983 more with a $1,280 bill. Of interest, and importantly, each of those entities has a different tax base. In EPISD, they have $18.5 billion worth of taxable property to apply that tax levy to. Socorro has 14.7 billion of taxable property in their district. The city of El Paso, of course, incorporates the entire boundary of the city, so they have $55.4 billion worth of property to tax, compared to Isleta with $7.8 billion of taxable property. Yes. And then we have provided for you the no-new revenue rate. I will tell you frankly, for a school district, the no-new revenue rate is, it's just ridiculous. It has no bearing on our tax rate, because the state sets it. Now, for a city, a county, a hospital district, and some of those other entities, it is important, and it's often taken into consideration. It used to be called the effective rate. For those typical entities, those political subdivisions, it matters. For a school district, it does not, because we are required to use the maximum compressed rate that's given to us by TEA, we add our debt service rate, and that's what we can charge. If we charge anything less, we get less money from the state. And we can't charge anything more than the MCR they give us, plus our debt service. So I'll show you just what our particular rates are. So this is for Isleta only. I'm starting with 2023, and I'm looking at 2025. You can see in this total rate line here on this row, we have dropped our rate since 2023 by eight total pennies. So that doesn't sound like a lot, but in fact, when you compare it to our peer districts, they have not dropped their rate at all in spite of increased values. And the way they've done that is just shifted out of their M&amp;O rate over to their debt service rate. So their rate has not gone down, it hasn't changed, even though their property values are increasing considerably. Additionally, in this particular fiscal year, we will owe $49.9 million on our voter-approved debt. So that's our debt payment for this year. But what's really important to note is that since 2023, we've reduced our total outstanding debt by $27 million, the sum of these two numbers. So our proposed rate for this year, which you will be voting on in just a short while, will be 1.20050 per $100 evaluation on Isleta homes. And with that, I can take questions.
Ms. Woodruff?
Thank you, Ms. Camber. I really appreciate this presentation.
Yes, sir.
Tax rate, always a fun topic. Complex. Thank you for making me feel better earlier today by telling me it's very complex. So let me see if I understand. The way I'm hearing it is that our hands are very much tied by the state of Texas with very little wiggle room in what we can do as a district in adopting a tax rate without losing state funding. Would you agree with that statement?
Yes, sir, that's correct.
And is what's being recommended tonight the lowest we can go without losing state funding?
Yes, sir, that's absolutely correct.
I know the state puts a maximum on us as well, but technically, we could raise, raise it higher, right, and not be in violation of state law?
Yes, sir. So this rate here, the .7705, is set by the state. If you raised it above that, they would just offset it by taking away state funding. This INS rate could be raised. Typically, the Attorney General says you can't go over 50 cents per $100 evaluation. But we're levying what we need to cover our debt. So could we go higher? Yes, by raising this rate, but we have recommended the absolute lowest rate we can adopt without forfeiting state funding.
Yeah, I appreciate that. I think that's the right thing to do, is to do the lowest that we can without affecting state funding. And I appreciate the comparisons to the other governmental entities in that I don't think we deserve the same criticism for the tax rate we sent, since we don't have the same flexibility as the other governmental entities. I felt like I had one more, but I think that's the important part that I wanted to make. This is as low as we can go.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Ms. Woodruff?
So you know that I'm always attending community meetings.
Yes, ma'am.
This is a hot topic.
Yes, ma'am.
In community meetings. And the most recent one that I attended, basically, I'm not going to say which elected officials it was that were saying this, but there were several there saying that, that we need to vote against that $140,000, because it's going to really, it's going to hurt, it's going to hurt the school districts. So I didn't really, I actually happened to be, I had just left when that comment came up, but that's not, that's not really true, is it?
No, ma'am, it is not. So whenever the state requires us to raise that homestead exemption, they offset it with funding from the state. So it doesn't harm the local homeowner, it actually puts more of the burden on the state and, quite frankly, property-rich districts. We are not one. Most of our funding comes from the state and other property-wealthy school districts throughout the state.
So basically, when I had that comment made to me after, it was basically after the meeting, I said, "No, I don't think that's true, because we're held harmless."
Yes, ma'am.
And so that's the correct answer for that.
Yes, ma'am, it is.
So I also thought it was kind of a, I mean, you can't tell voters not to vote for a home, I mean, an exemption. There's just no way that's going to happen. So I just think it's a silly thing to say. But anyway, I just wanted to make sure that I was correct on that.
Yes, ma'am, you are.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
trustee Ochoa?
On our INS rate, I know that you proposed .43. That's to cover our bond and principal and interest due as well?
Yes, sir, that's correct.
My question is, and I know we passed several bonds, 2016 and 20...
2015 and 2019.
2019. When are we going to pay those off?
So we have various maturity dates on all of that debt. The longest term is 30 years. But we have call provisions, so if interest rates change, and quite frankly, our interest rates when we sold both bond programs were phenomenal. I would not want to refund in this market. I will let the debt that we have stand. And so it's varying dates from five to 30 years, and they're in different tranches intentionally so that as they mature, you can either refinance them and extend them, or you can pay them off earlier. You have options with regard to debt.
So you have flexibility on that?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So in 2024, it was .455, and it was the same in 2023?
Yes, sir.
Why did, why is it lower down?
Because the property is growing. Property value that we're taxing, as its value increases, I can lower the rate and still maintain the same level of funding. So you can see that with a .43 compared to .455, I'm still raising for this year's debt levy 49.9. And let me show you, 49.9 million is this year's debt service. Last year's was 49.9 as well. So by, I lowered the rate two pennies, and I'm still going to collect the same amount of revenue needed for debt service as I did last year. And it's strictly because home values or because property values altogether increased.
So in essence, looking at the total rate for 2025, .20050, compared to 2023, 1.28130, we are actually lowering the tax rate?
Yes, sir, by almost eight cents over those two-year periods.
Okay. So I think that's lost in the clouds sometimes, that it's not raising, it's just the value of the homes and the properties that is, that is increasing the tax that is...
We have decreased our rate for four consecutive years. So even in 2022, we're lower than the 2022 rate. I just didn't want to put that much information on the slide. So if this rate is approved this evening, for the last four years in a row, we have reduced our tax rate.
Okay. Just wanted to clarify that. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Thank you for the presentation.
Thank you, trustee Ochoa. Oh, you're right.
But I wanted to tell you, I wanted to say that this is really encouraging for people, new families, people that are interested in moving to a different part of the city to come to Isleta Independent School District, because it's more affordable than any other area really in the city.
And we outperform them academically. Yes, ma'am.
And we have the best district. I did. We have the best district. Anybody else? One more question. Thank you, Ms. Camber.
Thank you.
Secretary Woodruff, is there anyone who signed up to speak on the tax rate?
No, there's not.
Thank you. Close, now to close the public hearing. We will now close a public hearing. Approved, the approval order setting the tax rate for fiscal year 2025-2026, is there any discussion? If there's no further discussion, may I have electronic motion? Oh, yeah. Yeah, twice. There it goes.
Thank you, I'm sorry.
Oh, you got it. Okay. May I have a motion? A motion by Ms. Woodruff, and then second by Mr. Hernandez. I'm good.
I move to approve that the 2025-2026 property tax rate be increased by adoption of a tax rate as set forth in the attached order and including separate components for maintenance and operations of 0.7705 and debt service of 0.4300, for a total of 1.2005 per 100 evaluations, which is effectively a 13.07% increase in the tax rate.
Please cast your electronic votes. All votes are in. Seven in favor, none opposed. We will now, let's go on the agenda review. We will now discuss the agenda items listed in the post-notice of the regular meeting of the Board of Trustees for September 10, 2025, and the related recommendation motion with the Superintendent and Executive Cabinet receiving responses to request questions and/or request for additional information through the Superintendent in the preparation for deliberation and action on set items at the September 10, 2025 Regular Board of Trustees For the consent items, consider approval of minutes for the Board of Trustees workshop and regular board meeting on August 27, 2025, 6:00 p.m. Number two, monthly... Number two, monthly financials report for July twenty twenty-five. There's no pull consent. Action items. Number one, District Seven, Del Valle High School Area Trustee, Trustee Lucero resignation. And that's it. The order of the agenda has been approved. May I have an electronic motion on the remaining consent items listed in this agenda recommended A motion by Trustee Hernandez, and a second by Trustee Lucero. Mr. President, I move to approve the consent agenda items listed on this agenda as recommended by the administration. All votes have been casted, cast, sorry. The results are in. Seven in favor, zero opposed. Consider approval of the minutes for the Board of Trustees. I already said that. Okay. Now on to our action items. It's District Seven, Del Valle High School Area Trustee, Catherine Arlucceto, resignation. Is there any discussion?
So I just want to say it's just been an honor and a pleasure serving with you, Catherine. I just appreciate your views on, on everything that you've talked about, and always that you've had a heart for whatever person, or whatever child, or whatever thing that we were discussing, that was always your first intent. And it's just going to be a very difficult thing to go forward, but we know that you're going to be doing so great where you're at. And I'm just so proud of you and so happy that I got to serve with you. Thank you.
Anybody else? Trustee Hernandez?
Yes. Trustee Lucero, it has been an honor and a pleasure serving with you. I'm really happy that I got to learn who you are in this capacity. You probably only knew me from the Facebook exchanges I'd have with your outstanding ex. So I'm glad we got to know each other personally. I think you and I always had the most, what was the word you would use? Spirited. We always had the most spirited discussions on this dais, and I always appreciate your passion, calling it like you see it, even when we disagree. I was very happy that we were on the same side, fighting for our lowest earners in this district that do so much for our district, and it was, it was an honor to fight that with you. And I'll continue that fight. I know where your passion is. Your passion is strong in your community, with the students and everybody involved. And like I said, the main thing is, I'm glad I got to know you, and thank you so much for everything that you have done for this district and your community.
Trustee Ochoa?
It wasn't up. He did it right. He's the one who did it right.
Thank you, President Bustillos. Now, it has been an honor to serve with you for, since we begun eight years ago, where some of us started this journey eight years ago, and then we got elected to be the officers. You got to be Secretary, I got to be President, and we did it for eight years through very trying times. We had a lot of challenges that we had to overcome or mitigate, and we managed. One of the things that I could always count on you was that you brought, like, like they said, you brought the passion. But I could always count on you for bringing the heart. You always brought that, that part that I'm not so, so strong at. I'm more on the, on the technical side and things. I look at the things a little bit differently, but you always brought us back to looking at, at the perspective from the heart. And you've always been that. You always spoke your mind and everything else, but you've always been committed to what we have endeavored here. That's why some of our, our results have shown that we have remained a top district, and that doesn't happen by chance. It has all of us working together as a team. We have our discussions, we have our moments, but in the, at the end, we all support each other, whatever the board is, has decided. One, one thing I did want to ask the lawyers was, if we vote no, can she stay?
I actually researched that.
You're going to research that?
No, I already did in preparation for this board meeting.
Oh.
School board members, good evening. Dr. De La Torre.
Well, we want to, we don't want to let her go, so...
It's a resounding no, unfortunately, sir.
Yeah. No, I think she, she's already made her mind, and I support whatever she's going to do. I told her that change is good. She is ready to meet those challenges, and who knows, you know, what happens. Just look in on us every so often when we have our board meetings, so you can see what's happened, happening here while you're gone. But we're going to miss you. We're going to miss your laughter, for sure. She does have a loud laugh. But she cries a lot, too. But she's very emotional, but that's good. That's good. I think that's made our board stronger for it and more in tune with what the community is all about. So thank you, Catherine. Best of luck to you. Muchos abrazos, and, and may your journey be guided that you will lead to a better life for you and your daughters. So thank you so much. I'm still voting no.
Anybody else?
When I first came on the, the board, I want to thank you, Catherine, and I appreciate your advice and your guidance. You know, it's tough. I was a fish out of water, didn't exactly know how this worked, and you helped me in a lot of ways. I'm not sure when it happened, when you finally decided that you liked me. I know, I know it was, it took a while, but, but it happened, and I really enjoyed our conversations and our back and forth. I'm wishing you and your family the best on all of your future endeavors, and don't forget us. We're always here for you, Catherine.
Trustee Lucero? Wow, eight years, and it's, it's definitely been a ride. No, you talked me off a lot of ledges, and, you know, we talked a lot of, a lot about board stuff, and I know sometimes we didn't agree on a lot of the things. And I always remember, you know, you told me, go with your heart, go with your heart. And sometimes our hearts didn't align, but we both knew that we were doing it for the right reasons. You know, we went through the board, we were, we were the delegates for four years. Four years. And I like to say, four years we're a delegate. And I, I think the best, the best time was when we won that scholarship money, remember? And all three of us were up there taking a picture. Your puppy. What's that little guy's name? Frida. So it's Frida, Ms. Lucero, and myself with a big giant check, receiving it for kids. You always, you always, you always brought kids in, and you always put kids first. And you allowed me to coach your daughter one time. Wish you would have come back. Maybe I wasn't a good enough coach, but, but truly enjoyed that, and thank you for entrusting me in her, with her. But I've told you, and I know you and I've had countless of conversations, and your compassion, your leadership, your countless hours and commitments made lasting impact to your community, this school district, and we ain't number one for, for nothing. And that, you brought a lot to that. Students and community, because of your vision, your hard work, our children are great, have greater opportunities. And like Chris said, you're always fighting for kids and opportunities to learn and grow and succeed. So thank you for that. And I've told you this, you're, you always bring that, like Cruz said, we, we sometimes get in, we get caught up in the, in the data, we get caught up in everything else, but you always bring us back to what really matters is the heart. And thank you for that, for being the mother of this board. Thank you. Anybody else? Yes, go ahead.
I want to say that after, since my announcement, resignation, I've received several phone calls and texts and people wanting to get together because I'm going to Maine, and it is far, and I've never been outside of this community, really. But none of this could be done without such a strong team. And I, many times, as you can hear people testimony tonight, I don't agree with a lot of things, and I'm very, very vocal about those things. But as a board, we have been able to navigate our disagreements and find ways to find solutions on behalf of our communities, our students, our employees, and, and that's what, that's what else makes this an amazing school district, because it does begin with leadership and leading by example. We can talk about the board members in our county, in our city, and that serve as trustees. And while we may not agree, we do serve with honor and respect, and we come back the next board meeting, and we tackle whatever we have in front of us without holding any, any type of negative emotions or negativity towards each other, because we understand the bigger picture is serving our community and the best interests of our students' future. So I do want to say that somebody told me when I first started that all I had to do was wave at parades. That's what a board member does. I will tell you, that's probably not exactly the best representation of being a board member, although the parades are fun at homecoming, and I'm going to miss this one. But it's been a learning experience for me. All my, all my kids went through Isleta Independent School District, and I started as a parent, and I've said this before, as a parent, the school district is a, is a big, big system that is very hard to navigate and very hard to understand. And I don't think we always understand what our, what our power is as a parent, or what our role is, or how we can work together with the teachers and, and everybody else who is making decisions for our children. So I really had the opportunity throughout these years of service to sit on both sides and bring that to, to the dais. And it hasn't changed my view of the school system, how important it is for teachers and support people to show up with that passion and love and heart and knowledge, and they do that every day. I, I met with the people from MIT this week, and it just reiterated, just listening to their stories, and how much our employees care about our students' well-being, this truly is a family. And, and that's what, that's why we're successful, because as, as Dr. Chuck coincided, I know every student matters, and every student has an opportunity here to be successful. To my fellow board members, I, I don't think I've ever, I've served on a few boards, and this truly has been the, a place where, where I've seen the most growth, not just in the district, but in myself as a person. And to Brenda, Bobby, Monica, Priscilla, everybody here, I want to thank you because I did call you guys so many damn times, at all hours of the night, and, and you answered the phone and you picked up, and when we were fighting through something to understand more, you were there with answers, and if you didn't have the answers, you found a way, and we worked with it together. And I know there's going to continue to be different things that, that are going to be challenges at this district, but I do think that there's a great foundation of, of community here. And Dr. De La Torre, I appreciate our relationship and how much you care about not just students, that's a given, but you truly care about the people at this district. You truly give a damn about the people that work for our district. And year after year, when we do your evaluation and we talk about things, you, you really do understand the pulse, both economic pulse and, and the, the pulse and the air of what our community is going through, and you take that into consideration. And I'm not saying you're perfect, but you are brilliant. You're a brilliant man. You, you, you have dedicated your life to essentially the past ten years of your life to this district and to this community. And you have probably one of the most longest-standing careers as superintendent here at Isleta. The second, well, you know, say a few more years and you'll get that. But yeah, it's, it's, it's been an honor. And again, I could say it's been an honorary cliche, it's a cliche to me. It's really been, leaving a job is easier than leaving this district because it's truly a family. And I'm going to miss everybody. I love you all, and thank you for the opportunity.
So with no further discussion, may I have an electronic motion? Motion made by Ms. Woodruff, second by Mr. Dwyer.
So I don't want to do this. I move to accept and approve the letter of resignation submitted by Del Valle High School Area District Seven trustee Catherine Arlucceto.
Please cast your votes. All votes have been cast. Results are in. Seven in favor, zero opposed. Thank you, Catherine. May I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Thank you.